Good Father, once again we call to give you glory and honor and praise. We thank you for the liberation that thou hast restored from these days. Lord, I pray that thou will continue to be merciful to us, that thou will lead and guide us in the past, that thou will ever have to go. Lord, as we conduct the business of our communities, we pray that thou will be in your midst, and the best stewardage over all for our community and this people will be made. I pray that thou will continue to lead and guide us, Lord, in every step of the way of our lives. Lord, I pray and thank thee for blessing and guidance each of us safe with this. And when you finish the business of this meeting, I pray that thou will continue to be with us, lead and guide us to our homes and various destinations safe with the deep waters. Please join me in the class.
Our class is to the flag of the United States of America, to the Republic of which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
I guess we got a few new people here. I'll go over the meeting procedures. The Island Planning Commission considers applications for site plans and village preservation permits. In addition, the Island Planning Commission considers requests for rezonings, conditional and special use permits, and ordinance amendments. The planning commission makes final decisions on site plans and village preservation permits, and it makes recommendations to the Board of Commissioners on rezonings, conditional and special use permits. The Island Plan Commission allows public comments for site plans and village preservation permits. The commission holds public hearings for the rezonings, conditional and special use permits, and ordinance amendments. Planning staff presents the application request to the planning commission during the staff's report. This report evaluates how the proposal conforms to the Glen County zoning ordinance and other applicable regulations, and conforms to the comprehensive plan when applied to zoning matters and ordinances. Applicants shall have the opportunity to present their request to the planning commission. It is the responsibility of the applicant to make presentations on requests and to address any conditions or factual findings with which they do not agree. Public hearings, public comments on public hearing items will be limited to thirty minutes for each opposing side, with a maximum of five minutes allocated to each speaker. There are no site plans or village preservations tonight. Comments are to be limited to relevant information regarding your position and should avoid being repetitious. If your group has a spokesperson, please allow that individual to present your group's position in the time allocated. The applicant may then provide a rebuttal to any testimony. The chairman may terminate testimony if it becomes repetitive. The chairman will terminate his speaker's time if the speaker begins personal attacks. Your cooperation in this process will be greatly appreciated. Thank you. First on the agenda, approve the minutes of the regular meeting of the Island Planning Commission held on January eighteenth, twenty twenty-two. Commission?
I'll make a motion to approve the January eighteenth, twenty twenty-two minutes.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. Any discussion on the motion? All those in favor, please indicate. We got two abstentions because you all weren't here. Okay, thank you. All right, the first item on the first public comment that we have on the agenda tonight is ordinance amendments. Beach and dune protection ordinance amendment. The county initiated request to amend the Glen County zoning ordinance, section seven, two, seven. Beach and dune protection to reduce the development setback line areas with an active, stable dune sequence, to increase development setback lines for areas without an active, stable dune sequence, to transfer several conditional uses to permitted uses and for other purposes.
Commissioners, I'm going to introduce this item for you tonight. Will Worley, Senior Assistant County Attorney, for those in the room who don't know who I am. So just a brief sort of procedural overview of how we got here. This amendment was discussed by the Board of Commissioners, I think, starting back last summer, about making it more consistent, the setback lines more consistent with the DNR lines. And then, I think concurrently with that, the IPC had been seeing a lot of landscape conditional use permit applications come through. So the board initiated this ordinance amendment to try to make our ordinance more consistent with the state regulations regarding the Shore Protection Act. Y'all originally considered this back in September. There were lots of input from IPC members about changes that could be made to the draft that was proposed to you at that time. You put it off to have a work session. That work session eventually happened in early December, and where more changes and things were discussed. And particularly Commissioners Brock and Usery worked really hard on making some amendments and making some draft changes to this. And what you see before you is largely that draft. I did another pass on it, too, to change some things. But the main thrust of the ordinance amendment that's for you tonight is to change the setback lines to meet the same setback lines that are delineated in the Shore Protection Act from the DNR. To add the Area C, which we did not have in our ordinance before this amendment, which deals with serviceable shoreline stabilization, to kind of streamline the process of setting that development setback line. Currently, under our ordinance, the Board of Commissioners has to do that. So every time someone wants to make an application, we go to the Board of Commissioners, they vote on whether that setback line is, and then someone can initiate their application. So this will have staff do that rather than the Board of Commissioners. And then, one of the big changes is changing a number of the things that had been conditional uses to permitted uses. So, under this proposed ordinance amendment, terraces, patios, and decks that are on grade, fences, landscape walls, retaining walls, stormwater management systems, removal and replacement of existing landscaping, removal of invasive species, and maintenance and planting of native landscaping are all going to be permitted uses now. And not all of those were conditional uses before, but particularly landscaping, decks, things like that, were conditional uses, which you guys were having to have applications come through and go through the process. So they'll change all those to permitted uses and limit the things that are necessary to come before you for conditional uses. And again, procedurally, when y'all heard this again at your regular meeting in December, because it had been so long since the public hearing in September, and because the changes had happened, so many changes had happened since then, y'all elected to have another public hearing tonight to hear public comments, public hearing on this draft of the ordinance, and so that's what we're here to do tonight.
Mr. Worley, just to be clear, just because we permit a use, or either under a permitted use or a conditional use, doesn't mean that it's automatic. They still, in some cases, have to appear before the, not the DNR, correct?
Right, so if there's concurrent jurisdiction, if something that they want to do would trigger the Shore Protection Act, they still have to go through that process as well.
And this ordinance does not allow the owner to go beyond their property line. If their property line happens to be at a certain location on the ocean, they can't go beyond that line, right?
Right, because our ordinance requires any improvements to be on your property.
Right, and so this would just be on their defined property. So if they've got a lot on the ocean, and it stops short of the shoreline, we can't give them a permit to go beyond that property line.
Right, so if their property were to extend within the area where there's a setback line, then it would apply. But if it stops short of that, this ordinance would not apply.
Right.
But that doesn't mean they couldn't do that on their property, it just means it would not be subject to regulation under this ordinance.
Right, right, and so, the way I read this is regardless, any improvements beyond that setback line has to go to the DNR.
That's correct.
Right, even landscape.
I think that's right. I mean, I'm not, I think most of the list here is the same as would trigger a Shoreline Protection Act permit. I don't think we have anything in our ordinance that's allowed, that's not allowed, or that can't be allowed under the Shoreline Protection Act.
Right, it can be allowed, but you still have to make applications through the DNR to have it, to get the permit to do it.
Right, right, just because you come to the county and get permission doesn't mean you're going to get permission from DNR.
Right, I just want to be clear on that. As staff, Commissioner, you have any other questions for staff? This amendment, they may come to the podium.
Yeah, I'm Hans Trump, and I'm here with John Shelton, who is an owner of a house on Thirteenth Street. And, you know, that house, the line got changed basically because DNR decided they wanted to come back to forty feet, okay? And then down in County, you just followed them back to forty feet. But now, and of course, the DNR is basically the expert on this. They spend millions of dollars tracking the beach and figuring out where to go all the time. And so, in order to follow them back to where they think it is not a problem for the shoreline, I think that the county needs to be in step with them. There's no reason for the county to have an extra fifteen feet that DNR doesn't think they need.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Trump. If you have anything else?
Huh?
If you have anything else to add?
No, except that, you know, this particular homeowner, when the beach was really coming in and jeopardizing the beach, he spent eighty thousand dollars putting sandbags in, okay? Which protected all of that beach because it started building up right after that, and now it's almost a half a mile out to the water.
Right. Thank you, sir. Anyone else that would like to speak in favor of this amendment? Anyone here, anyone opposed? Are you ready to come to the podium?
I'll hold up then. Good evening, I'm Susan Inman, I'm with One Hundred Miles, and I'm their coastal advocate. We are a nonprofit advocacy organization working to protect Georgia's one hundred mile coast. Glen's own Sea Island, St. Simons, and Little St. Simon are experiencing flooding almost monthly due to our sunny day floods. Glen County's water height is projected to be around one to two feet in twenty sixty, which really isn't that far off, we're all just getting a little older. But we are thirty percent greater than the global average of the sea level rise. And a reminder that Glen County's cost for Hurricane Matthew was eleven point four million, with removal of trees, limbs, and the structure total was nine point five million. I heard committee members say that they want to have more say over their property. I've heard you say that people may or may not be aware when they buy property of their development setback, and people not having the historical knowledge of this area is exactly why the forty-foot setback is important and needs to stay. The current development setback has reduced structure damages from flooding because it allows the water to move onto land and back out without taking man-made items with it. It also allows the sand sharing system, including dunes, to move the way it needs to, which means increasing natural protection. When stormwater damages a structure on one property, that debris can travel to another person's property or out to sea. If it goes out to sea, it ends up on beaches, in the estuary, and possibly even pile up at someone's dock. At that point, whose property rights are more important? Besides all that I just mentioned, the proposed changes to the permitted uses adds confusion to the development process. The Shore Protection Act does not allow development seaward of the state's twenty-five-foot setback line without a state permit. So changing permitted uses to include terraces, patios, on-grade decks, fences, landscape walls, retaining walls, stormwater management systems, is contrary to the committee's stated interest of being consistent with the state law. If this local change were to go into effect, we would be telling folks, you can do all this stuff without regulatory approval, but in fact, state law requires that they secure a permit from the state to engineer within the setback area. To close, iterate what many others have encouraged you to do since September, is to avoid unnecessary confusion, avoid the destruction of a very useful and needed setback and potential damage to private property and lands, and we recommend not to make these changes to the beach and dune protection ordinance. Thank you all for your time.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else?
Good evening. Since this is a public hearing, I'd like to be heard. My name is John Shelton, and I'm the owner of the property that Mr. Trump just talked about at forty-two, twelve, Thirteenth Street. Been here on the island for thirty years, and I agree about, you know, preserving the beauty and the nature. I think that's very important, and we're very proud of what we did in two thousand and six, when we invested a significant amount of money with the support of the state DNR. And obviously, I think the beach we nursed extremely well, and we're very proud of it, and those that had been around, even the DNR is very proud of what we've done. I think we're the only ones in the state to ever make a commitment to our beaches, and we did it for a lot of good reasons, obviously. What's puzzling me a little bit, because we were surprised, since our house is twenty years old, it needs to be updated. We wanted to extend a little bit of the house, not to encroach on, we worked with the DNR, they have a twenty-five-foot setback. And when we filed for permits back in the summer, we were shocked that we were denied by the county, and didn't realize after talking with the DNR that the county actually has a forty-foot setback. I guess one question is, were they ever the same? Because I wonder, we bought the house in two thousand and six, and apparently, if for some catastrophic reason, this house goes away, half of my house, my living room, is on your property, in your hands, rather, I should say. It's on my, yeah, it's up to you. I can't reconstruct the house unless I come here, ask for your permission, which I'm not sure I'd get. But yet, we are twenty-five feet back from the DNR shore protection line. So I guess one question, I'm not sure it can be answered here, is, has it always been, when was it changed to forty feet? Or can anybody give me any history on that, just out of curiosity? So that's one question, don't know. And then, last but not least, is, you know, obviously, for us, for that one reason, and for the fact that we would like to move forward on a project that we've been sitting in limbo for the past nine months, we sure would like to see that both the county and the DNR, both lines be coterminous. I think that's logical, I think it makes sense. I think the state Department of Natural Resources is a pretty intelligent group, and I think, I'm sure they're very concerned about their beaches, so, that's it.
Okay, thank you, sir. I will say that as long as I've been here, there's been the forty-foot setback, and that's been forty years or so. So it's been on the books for a long, a long time, and that's what we're here tonight to talk about. Yeah. Anyone else? Hearing none? Commission? Do you have anything to add to the discussion?
I'd like to thank you, Commissioner Brock, for doing all this work on us. I know it was very exciting.
Well, it was, it was, actually, wasn't it?
It was, yes, thank you.
Yeah, I will like to reiterate that, again, I think what we did in thinking about it just now, you know, the DNR has the final say on what happens beyond the setback lines that we're setting this ordinance here. They, we still have to go to, or anyone applying to, even landscape doesn't understand it.
Landscape does have to go to the DNR.
Yeah, so all of those things that are mentioned as approved uses are simply in there to define what county has no issue with, but ultimately, the DNR has the final say. And I think that's, hopefully, we made that clear. Commission, any motions? What's up on the?
Oh, okay, I recommend approval of the ordinance amendment as presented.
You got a motion and a second? Any further discussion? Hearing none, call the question, all in favor? Betsy Nanas, thank you. Thank you all. The next thing on our agenda tonight is another public hearing. TA four-nine-four-three, setback exemption for heating and air conditioning units ordinance amendment. The county initiated request to amend Glen County ordinance, section three oh-two, definitions, and section six oh-three, to exempt heating and air conditioning units elevated above the ground from yard setback requirements. Staff?
Good evening, Commissioners, I'm Pamela Thompson, Director of Community Development. Good to see you all, I know it's been a little while since I've been at a meeting. Again, this is a setback exemption for HVAC units. This is a Commissioner-initiated change to this ordinance. Basically, to summarize it, HVAC units at grade have always been exempt from having to meet the setback requirements. There are times that HBA units have to be elevated, often to meet the flood elevation requirements. Those have historically gone to the Board of Appeals for their consideration, up until, well, in my history, five years, all those that have requested for variance have been approved. There was one that recently went for variance and was denied, appealed that denial to the Board of Commissioners, and they discussed, you know, the difference between, they discussed what's the difference between HVAC at grade versus HVAC at an elevated height. So they directed staff to get this through to y'all and the Mainland Planning Commission for your consideration. So all this information was in your packet. This is a relatively, in the sense of how many words we had to put in there, right now it says HVAC on grade, we struck through on grade. So it's just HVAC unit, and then in the definitions, you see there's the addition of the language to make it clear that it does include HVAC units. This is just an example of structures that are trying to have those elevated HVAC units, and what goes typically before the Board of Appeals. Here's a photograph. Now, this particular property is not located in a flood plain, however, the applicant said because of grading of nearby neighbors, that there was water settling in that area, and so the preference was to elevate to eliminate any potential for damage to the unit. Here are your possible actions this evening. Mr. Worley and I are available if you have any questions. This is a public hearing and has been properly advertised.
Okay, this is, I've got some comments. First comment I'd like to make is, I was responsible to raise them up to begin with, or to exclude air conditioners that were raised up. And it goes back to some issues that we had and some lawsuits that were initiated on Sea Island, because of air conditioners that were raised up shortly after, and this goes back many years, shortly after the flood ordinance came into effect and we started raising air conditioners up. And you can imagine, at times, those air conditioners, the top of the air conditioner is up as high as seven feet. And if you've got houses with seven-foot setbacks, houses are potentially only fourteen feet apart. And so there was some issues with neighbors building their air conditioner up, and then it's right in the, right in plain view and plain hearing of the next-door neighbor. So personally, So personally, I'm not in favor of this at all. In fact, at the time, we, we discussed raising, or not having raised the air conditioners, we discussed eliminating all air conditioners. And to me, this is, this is just a problem with, with planning. I mean, the building department should ask for a site plan indicating where the air conditioners are and where the setback lines are, and if the air conditioner's over the setback, they should not give them a building permit. It's that simple. Most, and I know from looking at many plans, oftentimes, the builder or whoever's presenting the plans just forget that houses do have air conditioners, and they forget to locate them on their site plan.
You know, I see in certain residential neighborhoods, you know, there's always room made within the setback for the HVAC, same for the pool equipment, you know, all those things. It's one of those things that has to be considered from the beginning, you know, of the design phase. And I do worry that elevating these and allowing these in the setback, and you're potentially having, you know, someone's bedroom right next to someone's air conditioning unit. And typically, in situations like this, and especially on St. Simons, where you, a lot of the older neighborhoods where you're going to have houses 14 feet apart, seven-foot setback, there's not a whole lot of room of buffering. And by the time it comes to that, people are kind of probably tired of shelling out money. So, you know, proper buffering, fencing, planting, things like that, you know, are not done because they're required. So.
Yeah, I just...
Mr. Chair, I'd like to comment, please. I think this ordinance is trying to get at the, the conflict between having an air conditioner on the ground and one that's raised up to flood elevation. Doesn't make logic, just take example, three feet, if you're three feet in the flood elevation, the sound coming from that unit is no different than the one sitting on the ground. And so, does it make sense to approve the building permit for those on the ground and those not raised? So this becomes a constant Board of Appeals issue, and it's happened with new construction as well as older homes where an air conditioning unit is, has been added, and they found themselves in the floodplain. So I would prefer we get consistent, again, just like the previous ordinance amendment, be consistent with our rules and the logic around this. I had one question, though, about, is it just HVAC, or would it apply to, or could it apply to generators?
Our ordinance specifically says HVAC, so our implementation administration has been that's the only equipment that can go in a setback.
Yeah, so generally, the generator market is not in the smaller lots, which are the R6 lots. That's where we're finding most of these instances. I'm surprised it would be an issue on Sea Island. But, you know, the island is full of R6 properties, existing 40 and 50-foot wide lots, and homeowners like to build up to the setback of seven feet so they can at least have a 1,000, 1,500-square-foot home, which is not a big house. So I personally don't see it as a big deal, raising a unit a couple of feet versus staying on the ground. It just sounds illogical to me to, to not approve that. And that's why we find these constant appeals cases. And I'm surprised, you said the last one was denied? Was there a reason, particular circumstance that's different than the previous approvals?
It was because the hardship was of the person's own making, because they could have designed the house to put HVAC somewhere else inside the setback. And so one of the requirements for the Board of Appeals is, is this a hardship that they did not, that the applicant did not create themselves? And so this particular Board of Appeals leaned on that for that denial.
I feel like for an exist, I mean, you know, an older home that was built, you know, in the 60s, you know, a lot of the Southland homes, I mean, a lot of those air conditioning units are, you know, in the setback. But when you're, you're doing a new build or a tear down in a new build, every architect, I mean, everybody should know, you know, that you have to make room for that and that it's not just an afterthought.
Commissioner Brock, I'll tell you this. I've been here five years, and I don't necessarily have a dog in the fight as far as is the HVAC in the setback a good or bad idea. I absolutely agree with Commissioner Duncan that consistency is something good. I can tell you, everyone is aware of that. Every builder that builds in Glen County is aware of that, and they are trying to maximize the amount of buildable land on the lot that they're building for their customers. So we, these days, on-grade HVACs, we're never stopping them. They can show on their site plan that that HVAC unit is in the setback, and that's the one thing that we can't say, hey, you're in your setbacks. Elevated, sometimes we, this particular one had shown it on grade or had not said it wasn't on grade, and then elevated it during construction, and our site inspector caught it, stopped work, and went through this variance procedure. But they're all aware of it, I guess, is the answer to that.
Yes, well, I agree, and I agree with consistency, and my, my thought would be to eliminate, eliminate all air conditioners out of the setback. I really think there's a lot of reasons not to have that equipment abutting someone else's property line, personally, but that's, that's a personal opinion.
Commission.
I mean, let me ask you, as an architect, could you design it where the HVAC is at the back of the house, where it's not in that, anywhere near that?
The, the two things that I've employed recently on small lots is, on my house, which is a small lot, it's on the roof. We actually carved out a place on the roof, and we got the air conditioners, the outside units on the roof. One side of my house is right on the setback line, and right, right above, above that is, is the air conditioners. The other, the other thing is, there's some, there's new equipment that's very slim that actually mounts horizontal instead of vertical, where the flow is horizontal rather than vertical, and it protrudes only about a foot or so from the wall of the house. And so those, those two options in, on tight lots are available currently. I just, I just, I just think the, the problem with elevation or elevated air conditioners are, when does it become a building? You know, you've got a platform that's potentially as high as six feet above the ground, it can be very easily enclosed, and suddenly you've got a room, right? So, so I have, I have issues with that, plus I have issues with just safety. You know, it is equipment, it's, you know, there's, there's things that could happen. It is, it is electricity going to that, so you could potentially have a...
I don't, Mr. Chair, just clarify, whether it's in the setback or not, they have to be raised. So getting at the safety issue really is, is a moot point. They have to be raised to meet the FEMA guidelines. And putting them within the envelope for the building pad is not going to change the safety issue.
Anyone else have anything to, I think we need to open this up to the public here, hear what they have to say. Anyone from the public have anything to say about this? Yes, ma'am?
I must make sure that I need to get...
Please, I'd please go up, we'd love to hear it from you.
My name is Gretchen Nagels, and my husband and I bought property on South Island and built a home almost three years ago. And a house in front of us, a much larger house, was ahead of ours. And they did exactly what you were saying. They put their raised air conditioner on the side of our property in the setback. And we brought it, short story of a long story, we brought it to the county's attention, and they made them move it. Not only did we have that issue with our house, but we have a registered live oak tree. And we had to finagle our driveway in such a way that it would not harm our oak tree. And I'm pleased to say that Raj Dipmer is, is our arborist, and he has been taking care of our tree from the first thing that happened on the property that was building next to us. And our tree is healthy because we, we could have had a lot worse happen to our tree, but it, but it's thriving. So in addition to that, our driveway had to be in such a way to get around the tree. Raj told us, you know, what type of foundation we should put down.
Excuse me. We're here to talk about setbacks of HVAC.
Well, and, and that's what I was getting, I mean, that, that is the setback.
We're not talking about trees tonight.
Okay, all right, I'll stop it there. But what I will say with regard to this, to this property, is I cannot imagine the expense that the builder had to go through because we walked through the house to see where they had to channel everything up and over. So not only was that inside cosmetic work that they had to do, but outside. And if, you know, if, if the people that bought it knew what had happened, which we've never told them, I would have personally never bought that house. But again, the county, the county was there for us and knew that that was totally wrong, and they had to actually move it from this side of the house all the way over to the other side, so.
Okay, thank you, ma'am. Anyone else? Hearing none.
I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman. Ms. Rooks was raising her hand. I don't know that she could see her.
Okay, my question is, when we receive, you know, plans and all the rest and everything, I'm trying to think, are the air conditioning units included on the plans?
Yeah. We don't see those. But should be.
Right.
And I think, I think, I know all of my plans are, definitely have the air conditioners located. Now, oftentimes, builders fail to, fail to put them on the plans, I can tell you that. I'm not sure about anything that's coming for site plans, if we ask, ask those items to be put on a site plan or not. I think we do, though.
Sorry, we don't see residential site plans.
No, but we see site plans in general. I think, I think, I think Commissioner Rooks was just asking, plans that we get, do we have air conditioners on?
Right, I just want to clarify, we do not see residential site plans, generally speaking.
Also, well, my next point was, when residential applies for permit, you know, building permit, is there any type of layout or in reference to, you know, the air conditioning units or whatever?
Yes, ma'am, there is. So to kind of answer both of those points, when y'all see a commercial site plan or a multifamily site plan, you're supposed to see the entire footprint. So if that air conditioning unit's going to go on grade or on the ground, you should see it there, versus if it's going to go on the roof, when you see the elevations, you should, you should see the roof-mounted equipment. Commissioner Rooks, to your question, again, we call it a site plan, it can be confusing, but for both commercial or residential, we want you to draw, if we're looking down from the sky, what is the footprint of anything that you're going to be building related to that house? So they are supposed to be showing that, and most typically do. I'll tell you what commonly happens. Now, we have a lot of builders that build here regularly that know if it's on grade, it can already be in the setback. But sometimes they'll start building a home, and they get an owner after they've started that process, and the owner wants something moved around. So they'll move stuff around in the field and not necessarily tell us, but as our inspectors go, they look at every house 10 to 12 times, they will see, oh, this was moved or that was moved. I can tell you, most of the time, it's not necessarily intentionally that some of those things have been done, but we always give them two choices. You can move it to meet code, or you can ask for a variance, and if you don't get that variance, then you move it to meet code. This isn't a surprise to us, though, out in the field, Commissioner Rooks.
Can I ask you a question? Is the, it seems curious to me that the county would allow them to be in the setbacks in the first place?
Yes, sir. Actually, when I first started here, I asked that same question, and our building official that's been our building official for over 20 years just said that's how it's been done, and there's no other thing. We allow walkways, steps if you're having to get a grade and, or go from one elevation to another, and then HVAC equipment. So all I can think is, the way a lot of ordinances are written, was that when it was written, somebody really wanted that HVAC, you know, to be an exception. Mr. Worley may have more than, more than that, but it's been here a while. That, that caveat.
Seems like it might need a little bit more, more writing than what we have in front of us today.
Right. We attempted to take them all out, and that, but that was the compromise, is we could take the ones that were up and leave the ones on the ground.
I mean, I, I mean, old houses, you know, that are adding air conditioner, I can see where there's some times where they need variances, but if it's a new house, you should plan accordingly, and you should put it on the buildable area of your lot.
I think so.
I think it's responsible.
Well, my, my idea is, be consistent and not have any mechanical equipment in the setback, which would, would be generators, pool equipment, pool pumps, anything that's running. So how, how would we, this is a recommendation, so we can't change this, either we either recommend or we don't recommend.
Yeah, recommend or deny.
Yeah, well, we can do some conditions to it, can't we?
I, I think if y'all have...
I think, I think it would be better just to deny it.
Deny it and send it back.
I mean, the action's up to y'all. I mean, you do have the option, if you want to, to suggest changes to it, if you feel like that would make it more palatable and to get you to a place where you'd want to recommend it. But you can, you can recommend denial as drafted, you can recommend approval as drafted, or you can recommend approval with changes, if you have some changes you want to work out.
Yeah, but I think, I think the whole reason we're seeing this tonight is because there's some people out there that, that, that want them in the setbacks. And I, I think, at least my position would be that that's not a good idea. I, I think we're opening ourselves up for all sorts of things. I understand that the Board of Appeals is probably tired of hearing these, but I, I think if you just suddenly allow it, we're going to, we'll end up with things we never dreamed of, that are called air conditioners.
I would like to see no more put in setbacks, but if it's already in the setback, I wouldn't mind seeing it elevated. I know it's changing a lot, but...
But, yeah, I, I think, I think the whole premise that this is before us is probably not the, the right thing, personally. Anyway, commissioners, do we have a motion, one way or another?
I'll recommend denial of ordinance amendment as presented.
Call a question? All those in favor? All those opposed? Got one opposed, one opposed. The last thing on our agenda is just, just sort of an update, and Pam, you could, you could start this conversation off. Kind of tell us where we are with our, with our ordinance, or zoning ordinance, new zoning ordinance change.
Yes, sir, Chairman Ashree. As many of you are aware, in October 2018, the county adopted the 2018 Envision Glen Comprehensive Plan. The top priority on that plan was update the zoning ordinance. It was originally written in 1966. Its last comprehensive update was in the early 80s. And so in January of 2019, we contracted with TSW out of Atlanta to begin the process of a comprehensive update of our zoning ordinance and subdivision regulations. At that time, the board that was in place at the time knew and wanted it to be at least a two-year process, so there was plenty of citizen input. So 2019 and 2020 were spent with public meetings, town halls, going to Coast Fest, going to First Friday, having online surveys. When COVID came along, we then converted to some online town hall meetings, and all manner that we could come up with at the time of public input. That resulted in October, November of 2020, what was called a draft policy solutions document that was, what the consultants felt was the majority... document that was, what the consultants felt was the majority of the community input on how to address things. And it was a really long document because it's the whole zoning ordinance, but one example is they felt there should be higher architectural standards on the island, on commercial development, that sort of thing. So that was in November of 20, not, 2020. Then we had a new board come on in 2021 and they wanted to take a look at that and make sure the current board that's in place agreed with that. And they looked and then in October of 2021, we brought back the draft policy document that they had had input on and they directed staff and the consultants to start drafting those ordinances and to come up with the revised schedule because at this point, we are over a year past the due date. I think we're a year and a half past the due date. So TSW has been working on the draft and I just presented the first draft schedule to the Board of Commissioners today at their work session that started with the beginning of March would be version one of the full draft document that would go to a technical user committee. That would be the Robert Usrees of the world, the Patrick Dunkins of the world that are actually going to take this ordinance and apply it to, to construction. To get feedback from them, the original stakeholder group for this effort was the Islands Planning Commission and the Mainlands Planning Commission together. And then I had a request from Chairman O'Quinn to go back and re-invite the comprehensive plan stakeholder group to see if they would like to give input again. So I presented that calendar today. It's not presented to y'all because I got a lot of notes to mark up on it, so it's not the timeframe yet. They basically want to allow more time for longer input, yet still consider it for adoption before the end of this calendar year. So what that looks like is the months of March and April will be everybody looking at the draft, the consultant will be working with us to compile and consolidate all of those comments for the draft. That will hopefully get into version two that would come to the planning commissions in, into June, July for you all to consider again, public comment, your comments, and craft a recommendation to the Board of Commissioners for what they should do with this document. So it's a lot of work, they still want to make sure there's plenty of time on the front end, yet have this considered and before then, before the end of the calendar year. So there's about to be a lot more input and notification for all of us to kind of get this to, across the finish line.
Thank you, I thank you. And the last thing, I think, I think you all should have received my, my notes on this, I guess it's mine and now Patrick has also agreed to help, help, help me out a little bit. Three, three things that, that I initially had talked about a couple of months ago was single-family parking, single-family site coverage, and then single-family sleeping room density. And so what I've done the last, last month was just do a little research about some other communities up and down the coast and one, I think, in Colorado that I've, that I visited not too long ago, to try to get, try to see what other communities are doing. And you see, I won't look at, I won't go through all of these, but if you all see something you want to discuss, just let me know. But anyway, one of the things that, that does stick out to me is that the, there is a floor area ratio and I think Commissioner Brock kind of led, led me to this. In Sea Island, they've recently adopted a new design guidelines which, which adopts a fair, a floor area ratio guide for, for homes. And what that does is, is it limits the size of a house based on the size of the lot. And that may be something we want to look at. What I've, what I've noticed is that some of the older communities have, have that in place. And if you go up in South Carolina, you'll see Sullivan's Island has got a floor area And then likewise, Isle of Palms, Lewisville, Colorado, which is a little, a little mining town that was developed in the 1800s, that I visited there, there recently. Fernandina Beach has got a floor area ratio. Anyway, there's several things that, that could be talked about there. This is, this is sort of aimed at, at maybe corralling in what, what we're seeing now with, with, with some homes which are made, in my opinion, kind of excessively large, trying to accommodate short-term rental. What we're seeing, I think, is, is what I call mini hotels. They're, and they're springing up all over the place on St. Simons. I think some of the articles I've read in newspapers, just Googling short-term rental, short-term rental ordinance, along with the community name, you'll get a lot of discussions that's going on all over the country, primarily in resort areas that, that are talking about the pros and cons. You get areas like Savannah where they really, really have limited the number to only 20% of the housing stock in a neighborhood. On Tybee, they're trying to hold it to 50% and getting a lot of pushback. I think it's already at 40% on Tybee Island. On Hilton Head, the discussion is, you've got pro and con there. The realtors have jumped in on, on the discussion and they're all about, let's not have any, any guidelines for short-term rental. So anyway, I think, I think it's probably time that we should probably plan on having, having some, some sort of work session to kind of talk about what we would like to start to put together in way of any ordinance amendments, or if we even think that any ordinance amendments are necessary. That's, that's, I guess, the first question. And maybe tonight we could kind of get a, get a view of whether, whether or not we think anything's necessary at all.
Mr. Chair, I just, two comments. We already have a floor area ratio in a sense, and that's covered by the 50% site coverage ordinance that applies in the resort residential area. That encompasses floor area ratio. In fact, it's more restrictive than floor area ratio because it includes driveways, walkways, and other impervious structures. So I just wanted to clarify that. It's not that new to consider floor area ratio. The other comment I have is, and I, and I think this, this is worthy stuff to, for us to look at. And in most of these cases relative to parking, it's a minimum parking is what the ordinances are requiring, and we're looking for guidance on maximum parking. So I think that's, and I didn't see any examples where they had maximum parking in here.
There is, on Hilton Head, they do have maximum parking limits.
Okay.
They're, and they're, and usually it's, it's aimed mostly at multifamily housing and at, and at commercial, not so much, not so much for single family. And the 50% rule here, as you are aware, Commissioner Duncan, does not apply to single family at all. And I think, I think what we're seeing is, is sites, is sites on East Beach especially where there's so much going, going on, is they're just covering up those, those sites setback to setback. And I dare say it's, it's, it goes well beyond the 50% site coverage.
We do have it applied to residential in the Village Preservation District.
Right, but, but, but not, not as, not as the island as a whole.
I don't, I don't know why we wouldn't apply residential for the whole island, single family. I saw a lot of issues, especially with a lot that's got some trees on it that you might want to save.
Yeah, you know, I'll be honest with you, I think it was pointed out by you, Mr. Chair, the 50% is not that hard to achieve because it includes the setbacks. So it would not be a great improvement even if we applied it to the entire island.
Well, and that, I think, I think that's, that's, that's what we need to look at is what, is what, what makes sense. I think what we want to do is put, is put some guardrails in place because what I'm seeing is people going well beyond what is sensible and it's, the size of houses being put on a, on a 6,000 square, square foot lot. Right, right now, our resort residential district is more restrictive than, than the, than the single-family district in terms of what you can build. Resort residential district has a sleeping room density capped at 30 sleeping rooms per acre. On a 6,000 square foot lot, that would be four bedrooms. There is no limit on the single-family residence. You could put six, six bedrooms or, or more on a single-family lot. And on a 6,000 square foot lot, you could do it, you could make it happen.
I think we need, I think we need to be guided, but what are we trying to attack? Are we trying to attack the short-term rentals or is it, or is it building density?
Well, I think it's, I think it's some of both and, and at the last meeting, Mr. Worley kind of cautioned us a bit about, about we can't stop short-term rental, I think, I think, Mr. Worley, if, if I may paraphrase what you were saying. But I have noticed, well, like a city of Savannah. I wonder what the flexibility is in the law that, that's preventing us from just saying no short-term rental.
So I'm going to start by saying that Aaron Mumford in our office is the expert on this because he's had to do a deep dive on this, he's talked to legislators, legislative council. There is a little bit more flexibility on your ability to single out short-term rentals in the zoning ordinance, but that's more in terms of dividing it out as a separate use from single-family residential. So you could say maybe for instance, that it's a, it's a special use and make them come in for a special use permit, although even though that may be problematic because there's this obscure kind of state law that's, that's tacked on to another bill that had nothing to do with short-term rentals that said you cannot create a registry of short-term rentals. You cannot make people come in and say, we're creating a registry. Like, you know, we couldn't pass an ordinance that says if you're a short-term rental, you have to come in and get a permit from us or a license from us in order to do business. What our short-term rental ordinance that the board passed last year or the year before does is say, well, if you're going to do that, you got to make sure you're paying your taxes, your, your accommodation excise tax. And the certificate there is to prove that you're paying your accommodation excise tax. But it's, it's not a regulation by the county on, you know, you know, how you operate and things like that except for some of the stuff that applies. So, and again, I think Aaron is probably the expert you want to talk to, so you, you do have a little bit more flexibility on the zoning ordinance because you're exercising your zoning powers outside of the zoning ordinance. I think pretty much what's in our zone, our short-term rental ordinance now is probably about the limits of what you can do.
Well, right now, in our zoning ordinance, short-term rental is not, is, is not defined. There is no definition for short-term rental in the zoning ordinance.
And, and the reason for that is, I think I maybe mentioned this last month, the Board of Commissioners, since I've been here at least, and since this has become an issue, has considered short-term rental of a person's privately owned property to be a use consistent with single-family residential. It's been the subject of litigation a couple of times, that's been the county's position in litigation was that, single-family residential use includes renting your house out for other people to use it on a short-term rental basis or a long-term rental basis. You know, if you're renting it out by the year, six months or a year, that's consistent with our zoning ordinance for single-family use. So you could, you know, if you, if you wanted to, I think, under your, the zoning ordinance, separate that out as a separate use and say, well, that is not included within the realm of permitted uses consistent with single-family residential by making it a conditional use or, or maybe a special use or something like that. I do know Savannah and I think maybe Chatham County have done some things in their zoning ordinance to limit them to a certain percentage or those kinds of things, but yeah, right now, since I've been here, the, the county and the Board of Commissioners has, has had the policy that it's consistent with single-family residential use.
Right, well, that, it could be an allowed use within a single-family neighborhood would, would be consistent with what they're saying and still defined, correct? I mean, we could define it and still say, well, this is, this is, this is allowed in a single-family neighborhood. But what I, I guess what I'm looking at though is, is would it be possible to say the number of parking spaces required for a short-term rental be something different than it would be for a single-family residence?
I don't think so, no.
Really?
Chairman Ushry, if I might make a suggestion, absolutely not an attorney, I've, I have been a planner in localities where the attorneys let us draft ordinances. I would say always to kind of define the problem you're trying to eliminate or mitigate. I think the most calls we get for short-term rental parking is on-street parking, not number of cars that are in front of that unit being rented, but that they, you know, they have two spots in front of the unit, but eight cars came and so there's six on the street. And I know cities like Athens, Georgia have done residential parking, parking programs because, about to check, to address it. Because it's like they don't really care who's parking on the street, but only two, two on-street per building.
Right, and I think, I think, I think, I think that is one of the issues that's been brought up and I'm, I'm well aware of it. We've got one short-term rental in, in my neighborhood, right across the street and, and as many as six, as six vehicles show up there and, and they're parked all over the street. And my, my thought is, why shouldn't they park on the, park where they are supposed to park on the property?
Well, I think it's, I mean, we talked about this in the workshop last year, but I, I think it's a, this is a much bigger issue.
Right.
It all comes down to, to planning, you know, because I, I have short-term rentals and I've been vocal about that. However, we have planned for that, we have not maximized our space, we have plenty of parking, there is absolutely no on-street parking.
Right.
You know, and it, it, it all goes back to even the conversation with the, the HVAC, you know, that, that a lot of these things aren't initially being thought out on the front end and, and now we're in the situation where people are trying to, to punish the people that are, the short-term renters for the ones that are not being considered, that we, we don't necessarily have any guidelines for them to follow. So I think you're right, like what, what is it that we're trying to mitigate, you know, is it, it's, it's not necessarily short-term rentals because these houses would be full by an owner, if not a renter now, if someone allows more than the house holds.
Well, I think, I, I disagree with that somewhat. Right, right now, our short-term rental ordinance allows up to 15 people, 15 people in a short-term rental as well.
Well, but, but 15 people shouldn't go in a short-term rental that only has three bedrooms. I mean, that, that, that then goes back to the, I mean, if there's nowhere for them to sleep, if there's not a, a bed and a head and a pillow, then, then they shouldn't allow 15 people.
Right, well, that, well, that goes.
They shouldn't allow what goes in there.
Well, that goes to my comment about putting some, putting some guardrails in place because people are building houses that will accommodate 15 people. And we're seeing, we're seeing, and, and we're seeing that more and more. I, I, I've got clients that come in with the idea that their house, that there's going to be a second home, let's make sure we've got enough bedrooms because we're going to rent this thing like crazy. And, and so, you know, five bedrooms, it's not unreasonable that you can get 10, 10 plus two.
Mr. Chair, sorry to cut you off, can we move on, please? We kind of be laboring this and we're not, we don't have any decisions to make on this tonight.
Pam, I got a question for you. Is this something that TSW is considering working on or drafting up or anything like that? They're the experts.
Well, actually, and Will's correct, Aaron really, Aaron Mumford really became an expert along with Chris Michael, who is property management for Hodnet Cooper, Scott McQuade with the CBB. They all got together and did a lot of work and a lot of research on this. And there are no plans as part of the comprehensive update to change the short-term rental it was, ordinance, it was knowingly done during the process. And to the point, Commissioner Brock, it's two per bedroom plus two to a max of 15. So if it's an existing unit with two bedrooms, it's supposed to be six people. And, you know, to the point, at the end of the day, the ordinance says, I can go count after 10:00 PM and there's 10 people in there, I can ticket them. It's like, how many dogs can you have in your house? You know, that's not my dog, I'm house-sitting her dog or, it's trying to mitigate the negative impact on the neighbors and how can we best do that? And I actually think TSW. And I actually think TSW would be very good at helping, um, in addition to all the research that Chairman Ushry and Commissioner Brock and Commissioner Duncan have done, um, would be to give us some examples of best practices for addressing some of those challenges we have. Um, and Chairman Ushry makes a good point. Anything you do right now has to be R6-wide, R9-wide. So, you know, is, are there some people that park all six on their lot and would be upset if suddenly they couldn't park that, and, and they're full-time residents? It's, you know, um, but if you all want to have a work session, if you want to ask, have me bring TSW to that, or anyone else that you would like to give input, we can certainly do that.
I, I would, I would think a work session would be in order, if for no other reason, just to hammer out what it is we may be trying to accomplish to, to Commissioner Duncan's point.
And Chairman, you said within the next month or two months, did you want that?
Uh, well, I, I assume that if we're going to try to, try to get a consultant, that it may take a little longer. But just as soon as, as soon as, as soon as we can find, maybe get a couple of dates from them, and let's see if it works for the, for the commission.
Yes, sir, we'll do that.
Is there budget for the consultant to support this process?
There, it, this is not within the scope of their contract with Glen County. I do have money in my budget for consultant or professional help throughout the year. I mean, it, it couldn't be a $10,000, "Come help us," but "Come help us with a work session", absolutely.
Yeah, yeah. I, I had mentioned it to Mr., uh, the Chair recently in an email that taking on these ordinances, uh, I think requires either a lot of staff support or a consultant to get us through some of this, um, because we can be here just spinning in circles. Thank you.
And Commissioner Duncan, Commissioner Booker at our work session today made a good point. This is quite the undertaking the county and the county's asking y'all and the citizens to do, this comprehensive update. There's gonna be something on January 3rd that we're gonna look up and say, "We missed that," or "That's not doing what we thought it would do." And so, you know, it may be a "Use this ordinance for a little while, and let's see how it's working, and do we need to modify it maybe at that point to better meet the needs of our community?" But ordinance is a living document, and we're gonna be changing it, you know, this is the only time.
Day two.
Yeah.
Day two.
You know, a comment, don't ever put me on the end anymore, please.
Heard, and we will make sure, Commissioner.
We've got, we've got one other thing, uh, uh, Commissioner Willis would like to make a.
I haven't made my, my comment yet. Oh, but go ahead, Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Willis? I just, just to be short, I just wanna state for the record that, uh, our recording secretary, Ms. Janet Loving retired last week. And, uh, the, over seven years that I've worked with Ms. Loving, she's been nothing but professional, very courteous, very helpful. Uh, anything that I'd ask her to do, which I didn't ask a lot, she would do her best to get it to me. And I just wanna say that this commission's gonna miss Ms. Loving, the mainland, uh, commission will miss her, Glen County will miss her, and, you know, over 36 years of service to Glen County, and, uh, they just don't make folks like this anymore. So I just wanted that for the record, that, uh, I appreciate the work that she did over the years and for helping us on this, uh, planning commission. Uh, I'll miss her, and I know you will, too.
But is there any way we can give some type of recognition, um, for her service, years of service?
Absolutely, Commissioner Rooks.
Okay. Now, my comments, whatever I was gonna make initially, I just threw that out about putting them in. Okay, when we get, when the TSW or the consultants, when they come, you know, I have a problem with, we get them, and we, um, go through the motion and everything, but we don't follow through on what's being presented, you know? So I would like for us, again, that we're consistent, come and back up. You know, to be consistent when we get individuals come in, consultants, and if it's beneficial for our community or for us, that we will follow through on it, whether then having them come, okay, we pay them, you know, and we go on doing the same old, same old. So, okay, just wanted to say that.
Thank you, Commissioner. Anything else?
Mr. Chairman, if I may, um, building off Mr. Willis's comment, um, so as he mentioned, uh, Janet was not just a valuable member of our team, but she was your duly-elected recording secretary, um, under your bylaws. So, um, we're gonna need to address that issue. Um, Stephanie and I talked about this, um, late last week, and, and one thought we had was, there's no requirement anywhere in an ordinance or anything that you have an elected secretary. Um, it's, it's really, I think. Remove the, the secretary as an elected, um, officer, and just, you know, maybe make a note that it'll be a staff, Glen County staff member or something like that. So I wanted to kind of float that idea with y'all to see if that's where y'all'd like to go, or you'd rather keep it, and then we try to find someone to, to present to y'all as a candidate for secretary, or any other feedback or input you had.
Anyone else have anything to say? Uh, I, I, I think that sounds reasonable.
I like that.
Yeah, I, if you would, uh, Mr. Worley, if you would put that, uh, maybe draft it ordinance for us to see.
Yeah, we'll, we'll draft a proposed amendment to the bylaws. Um, obviously, we'll bring it up to the MPC as well, um, to see, get their input before we put any kind of pen to paper, but hopefully we'll have something that y'all both can agree with, and we can present to y'all next month.
Thank you. Entertaining motion to adjourn?
Second.
We head to the first in a second. Okay, okay, thank you. I thank you all for being here tonight.
I'll sit on the end next time. I'm just, I do have a great.